...of the March 16th Special Counsel Meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. Mary Jo, can you please call the roll?
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Bill Beer.
She is absent, excused.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Brodick.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Meg Ryan Chackey.
Here.
Andy Salhers.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Father, we thank you for the opportunity that we have again tonight to meet as a council. Our Lord, we certainly are living in uncertain times. I pray that you'll please give Mayor Gallagher and her administration, as well as his council, wisdom in making the decisions that need to be made to protect the residents of our city. But we thank you for both our country and state's leaders in taking the lead on this. I pray that you please will keep our residents safe, keep them healthy. Lord, help us to be an encouragement and a blessing to those that we come in contact here in Brooklyn. And, Lord, we pray that this virus will pass soon. And again, Lord, that you'll please keep all healthy, we pray in Jesus's name. Amen. Thank you for taking the time this evening to be part of this Special Counsel Meeting. When we met a week ago, I encouraged residents to be prepared, to practice good hygiene, to follow proper protocol if you're sick, and of course, obviously, not to panic. While much changes seemingly from minute to minute, the advice stays the same. Our Governor, Governor DeWine, has seemingly led the charge in this domino-like effect that has seen unprecedented closures and cancellations across Ohio and America. Just today, Governor DeWine announced the closure of gyms, water parks, and is even proposing the delaying of our primary election until June the 2nd. Even with all the press conferences and the information provided, there still seems to be a lot more questions than there are answers. But the best advice that I've heard is the saying that was given last week: Be prepared. Practice good hygiene. Follow proper protocols if you're sick. Follow the recommendations of the CDC, and do not panic. Will this virus surpass the infection rates of our other illnesses? Will this virus kill more people than previous illnesses? It's too early to tell. Again, in context, the H1N1 infection infected over 60 million Americans and killed some 12,000 between April 2009 and 2010. Rarely is this even talked about today. In fact, there was little or no change in our lives during that particular illness. Is this one different? As far as the spreading of the illness and ultimate death, I don't know. Only time will tell. What we do know is that widespread concern is real. And in my opinion, abiding by the restrictions that have been implemented by the state and federal government makes sense. I am very cognizant of our rights as Americans, and I understand the concerns that many are having with the government shutting down vast sections of the private sector carte blanche. These concerns are valid and should be addressed. I too am concerned and fearful the precedent that these measures may have set. Others are concerned the government is not doing enough to stem the tide of this virus and should do more. It's possible additional government mandates will take place. The concerns on both sides are valid. A much discussion regarding how this was handled will take place. However, right now, regardless of our thoughts and the government's response, we all are feeling a sense of powerlessness, unable to do anything. However, the feeling may exist, but in reality, it's simply not true. In fact, nothing could be further from the truth. The city of Brooklyn will be doing everything that we can to assist those in need. The city and the school system are working in tandem to ensure that those that are in need are taken care of. However, the best people to help Brooklyn residents is not the government or the schools, as is almost always the case. The best people to offer assistance is you. Now is the time to be a good neighbor. You know your neighbors much better than the city does. You know their needs or struggles that they are having well before the city government will. Brooklyn is well-known for its small-town feel, where neighbors look out for each other and help each other. I am confident this will be the case at this time as well. Another way that we can help is to patronize our Brooklyn restaurants by ordering food for carryout or for delivery, for your family or for your neighbors. By shutting down these places, the livelihoods of those restaurant owners is going -- is gone, except for the carryout. Residents can also volunteer at a food bank or a shelter or some other charitable organizations that is helping others. We can also pray. I know that many Brooklyn residents are people of deep faith. As a person of faith myself, I find myself spending much more time in prayer asking for God's wisdom, His protection, and His strength for my family and for my city. It is of comfort that Christ offers a peace that passes all understanding. He is not surprised by any of this, and He is able to guide and direct us through any difficult time. Scripture says in John 16:33, "These things have I spoken unto you, that in me ye might have peace. In the world ye shall have tribulation, but be of good cheer; I have overcome the world." We are Americans. We have faced difficult issues before. We will get through this and will be stronger than on the other side. The legislation before us this evening will give council and the mayor some flexibility in offering needed services to our residents while ensuring that our employees are protected and provided for during this time. If adopted, the extended powers authorized this evening will expire at the earliest of April 30th or 14 days following the expiration of Mayor -- or Governor DeWine's state emergency declaration. Council does sit ready to extend this legislation beyond these dates if necessary. I count on privilege to serve as your council president and look forward to hearing stories of how we all help each other through this trying time. Please stay tuned to the city's website and social media pages for updates regarding the city and its operations. If you need immediate assistance with COVID-19 questions, please call the Ohio Department of Health COVID Response Line at 1-833-427-5634, or you can visit the website at coronavirus.ohio.gov. Before us this evening, council is ordinance 2016. Mr. Butler has sent out a couple of revised copy of this, one as recently as this afternoon. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Butler. If you can please go over what is in this and what council needs to know, and then answer any questions that he has.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Council members, last week, late last week, as things were developing on a daily basis from the Governor's office and the Office of the Director of Health, we were paying close attention to that. And after the Governor had issued his emergency declaration, General Yost, the Ohio's Attorney General, weighed in late last week on Thursday with an opinion that said that the Governor's emergency declaration, in combination with the Health Director's orders limiting the attendance of more than 100 people in a public gathering, that was at the time, taken in conjunction also with the Open Meetings Act, permitted local governments to actually exclude the public from attending otherwise open meetings. That was on Thursday. Director or General Yost's opinion on Thursday, which, by the way, is an opinion that is meant to be helpful and give cover to Ohio municipalities. General Yost does not represent Ohio's municipalities and cannot give legal advice to cities around the state. That's my job. But what he attempted to do is read the Governor's orders, the Health Director's orders, and the revised COVID provisions on open meetings together to come up with what would be a reasonable solution to the competing interests, which are the interests of the public to attend public meetings and the interests of the health officials and the executives to prevent the spread of coronavirus. His opinion on Thursday was that public entities could exclude the public from attending meetings. And I got to work at that moment writing some legislation that would in turn give you cover in the event that the city of Brooklyn decided to limit the public from its public meetings. One day later, General Yost weighed in again, both -- well, actually, just in writing, and indicated at that point that he read the executive orders in addition to the Open Meetings Act and the federal CDC orders to permit not only public entities from excluding the public from attending public meetings under the crisis, but also to permit those who actually would otherwise have to appear to vote and deliberate and discuss at public meetings, namely you and all of our appointed board and commission members in this city, from also having to appear in person. And instead, opined that, again, just to give cities some cover, some law directors like me some cover, opined that public officials could attend and deliberate those meetings electronically. And this was unprecedented in Ohio. That opinion was unprecedented in Ohio. Once again, he countenance -- or he cautioned law directors to research the matter independently, but tried to be helpful to cities who were, again, worried about spreading, lowering the curve, that is to say, flattening out the curve. So on Friday, after he issued that order, I wrote the piece of legislation that is before you. And I took into account the mayor's executive decisions to close certain facilities in the city, which we knew was going to have an impact on jobs and employee performance. I also took into account what the Attorney General had passed along to us over the last several days. The piece of legislation before you wraps into one law, one uncodified ordinance, the administration's proposal with respect to public meetings and the treatment of public employees during this crisis. The whereas clauses, what I call the preamble, lay out the reason for the legislation. And of course, by and large, has everything to do with the COVID-19 pandemic, the coronavirus spread, the federal and state orders that are being handed down daily. And it also relies on our charter, our Municipal Home Rule Charter, which is the most sacrosanct body of law specific to the city of Brooklyn. That charter permits the city to determine the time, place, and manner of its meetings, for example. And it gives the mayor executive authority to oversee the compensation of the employees. Council, of course, under the charter, sets funding restrictions and sets the budget and authorizes every dollar that's spent from the city treasury. So you have an oversight role as well, which brings us all together to discuss and deliberate over this particular ordinance tonight. The ordinance does two things. One, it permits -- well, let me see if I can backtrack. The ordinance does -- it involves two different areas of the law. One is the Open Meetings Act. The second area of the law is the compensation of employees. Let me get into the first, what the ordinance does with respect to the Open Meetings Act first. It does a couple of things. It permits the mayor, in the case of board and commission meetings, and it permits the council president, in the case of council meetings and council committee meetings, to postpone or cancel public meetings that have been publicly noticed without a separate vote of council or the board and commission that is to meet. That permits, under emergency situations, any meeting that maybe is not essential to be postponed. And so in those instances, the council president and the mayor would act as sort of the executives over each branch in postponing or canceling a meeting. It also permits the mayor or council president, depending on the type of meeting, to limit the attendance of the public at that particular meeting, provided the public has the ability, as it does, and we're testing it out tonight, but as it does tonight, to watch the meeting or listen to the meeting live and be able to hear every council member deliberate or every official who gets to deliberate do so, so that they can be a participant, the public, that is to say, can be a participant in their government in real time. It does not permit real-time public Q and A or public statements to be made. And we recognize that that would be a fallout of this kind of legislation. We would hope that any chair of a board and commission which would be meeting without the public in physical attendance would ask for, solicit, public comments in advance. And we also hope that the board chair, the mayor or council president, would exercise enormous discretion in terms of which meetings really have to go forward without the public in attendance. We would want the public to attend as many meetings in person as possible. And so any meetings that don't, that really don't need to go forward, shouldn't go forward, would be my recommendation under these circumstances, if the public is not able to be there in person. But absent that, if there's business that must occur and the public wants to stay home or should stay home, this legislation would permit mayor, council president, to limit the attendance of the public at that particular meeting. Again, provided that the public's able to watch it in real time. The legislation would also permit, with respect to public meetings, the deliberative body, in this case, city council, but could also be boards and commissions, to actually participate fully in that public meeting remotely. That would be unprecedented under Ohio law. It's not necessarily unprecedented under municipal law, but it is unprecedented statewide. The Open Meetings Act does not permit the attendance, deliberation, or discussion, or voting of any official otherwise empowered to do so remotely. Those officials have to participate in person under the Open Meetings Act. And of course, I know this council endeavors every time it meets to follow to the utmost extent the Open Meetings Act's provisions, and does so. But these are unusual times. And so this legislation would give the council president or mayor the ability, depending on the meeting, to call for a meeting publicly noticed, again, available for the public to watch or listen to live, but call for a meeting where the actual voters, the deliberation, the discussions, you would appear remotely, electronically, telephonically, however we could arrange to do that. Assuming that all your voices could be heard, it probably would make sense to ensure that you announce who you are before you speak. That would make sense. All of those things would be, in my opinion, essential. And of course, we would want to limit the docket items that we address at any of those kinds of meetings to only the most essential docket items that must be addressed at that particular time. We'll talk about that a little bit later tonight. That is what the ordinance would do with respect to the Open Meetings Act. With respect to employee provisions during what would be a work stoppage or closure of a facility, a requirement that employees work from home, a time period during which schools are closed and employees may not have ready access to childcare or may not want to put their children in childcare under the circumstances. We wanted to give the mayor some executive privilege to spend money out of the treasury in a way that hasn't been spent before. And, or that hasn't been done before. It is contemplated under this legislation that the mayor could pay employees what they would have been paid even though they cannot work. It's contemplated under this legislation that, and that's on a case-by-case basis, it's contemplated under this legislation that employees could use paid leave banks that are not ordinarily available to them under the circumstances, such as sick leave, when they're not sick, when they may be worried about getting sick, or when they may be worried that a child might get sick, or when they may need to care for a child who's out of school. This legislation would permit the mayor, on a case-by-case basis, taking into account all considerations possible, the ability to make exceptions to the usual rules in order to make sure that employees are paid or that paid banks are being used in order to ensure that they receive the same paycheck they would have received. And so that really is a summary of the two main provisions of the ordinance. It also should be known that it's the administration's proposal, and I did consult with council president on this as well, and I appreciate his helpful guidance on this, that this be sunsetted. In other words, the legislation will not last forever. It would only go until either April 30th, if the Governor's emergency orders are still in effect on that date, or 14 days after. And I'm thinking, by the way, when I say 14 in this legislation, it's a pay period. So 14 days after those orders were to be rescinded. No one, knowing what we know today, believes that the emergency orders around Ohio are going to be rescinded at any time soon. So we anticipate that this legislation probably will remain in effect, if it's adopted tonight, until April 30th. And then before that, you would have to get together to extend it. Otherwise, the provisions go away. We want to do that because we want the public to recognize that this is, we recognize that this is unprecedented, and it's not something that we would want to do under any circumstance. But these circumstances are so unique, where just this afternoon, the President of the United States has given guidance to limit public group meetings to no more than 10 nationwide. Things are changing so rapidly. So our circumstances warrant some unusual response. And what you have before you is something that is, of course, highly unusual, but we think gives the maximum amount of flexibility necessary to keep the government running, keep employees from suffering undue hardship, and still be responsible to the citizens that you serve. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Questions from council?
Do you have to recognize?
Yes.
Just a couple of questions. You mentioned, Mr. Butler, your hope that chairpersons of any bodies or commissions would solicit input or questions from the public prior to the meeting. Is there a reason why it wasn't included in the ordinance as a requirement?
Only because public comment is not a, it's not a, this certainly sounds bureaucratic, and I regret sounding that way. Under the law of Ohio, which is what we are currently, what we currently govern ourselves by under our ordinances, public comment at public meetings is not a mandate. The government is not obligated to accept public comment at public meetings. I know that that sounds offensive, but that is, in fact, the state of the law in Ohio. Now, historically, rightly so, this government and all of its boards and commissions and committees accepts public comment at public meetings. But I didn't necessarily want to create additional legislation on that point. And I also didn't want to have any otherwise validly adopted motion in a public meeting invalidated because someone may not have recognized how to get a question to a board chair in advance. So I just didn't want to add that additional language. But I most certainly would give the admonition, and I don't think it's that difficult, to either the council clerk or a secretary of any board and commission or committee to, in the public notice itself that goes out, announcing that meeting, invite the public to submit questions in advance, based on agenda items or otherwise, that will be read into the record and hopefully responded to at that very meeting, and give a mechanism for doing so, such as an email address or something like that. I know that there are other bodies out there that are doing that under these circumstances, where they are going to be excluding the public from their public meetings.
Okay. And I don't think it's, I mean, I think we can all agree that that is something that we would like to see also, that is part of the public notices, that that be included.
I would just say, Mary Jo, whenever we have public notice.
I think that's very important.
Include that with an email address.
No problem. And then I did clarify with Mr. Butler earlier, I guess it was this morning, I wanted to make sure that our employees, who may not need time off to care for someone or because they're ill, but if they're in one of the high-risk groups, that they also would be able to seek relief in being able to use their sick leave.
Thank you. And for the record, then, just to clarify, under Section 2, all of those authorizations that you would be giving the mayor to exercise some discretion in these situations would apply in a situation like that, based on that last language in that section, which begins "all in order to adhere." That really is meant to cover everything that we're all worried about with respect to coronavirus. Parents who have to be home with kids because kids are home for the first time. Employees who are shut out of their normal jobs because we've shut down portions of the government. Or the governor has shut down portions of government. Last week, the mayor, for example, issued an order of closing the rec center and the senior center. Today, the governor issued an order of closing all rec centers statewide. So you don't know who these orders are necessarily going to come from, but they may, and have already had a dramatic impact on the operation of government. Folks who are concerned because they're in a high-risk area health-wise, who want to stay away from people, absolutely, on a case-by-case basis, we want to, we certainly want to give the mayor the ability to investigate, as to inquire, as is permitted by law, about a person's individual situation, so that nobody feels like they could, as if they could abuse the system. I certainly wouldn't think that any employee of the city of Brooklyn would do that, but we want to give the mayor the ability, at least, to inquire on a case-by-case basis and approve on a case-by-case basis. Sometimes, those orders may be a little more sweeping, and not necessarily just on a case-by-case basis. But we want to give the mayor full discretion, in my opinion, to be able to analyze each situation and make judgment calls based on those. I spent an hour and a half in a seminar today just on employers having to navigate the very complex web of state and federal regulations in view of this pandemic. Employment regulations. What can an employer ask an employee about, and what can employer not ask an employee about? When does FMLA apply? How will FMLA be extended to respond to the coronavirus, based on some congressional action expected this week? There's a real minefield, and so, in my opinion, this is the first step of many to give the mayor the ability to act appropriately under, within that entire milieu of federal and state regulations and our own shutdowns.
Thank you.
I might have one further question, Mr. Butler. You mentioned the second vacation leave. I'm assuming that that would be used first prior to paying employees beyond that?
I'm not so certain. Now, the mayor, I don't want to speak for the mayor. I'm not entirely certain when it's going to be obligatory for the city, if at all, to pay an employee without the employee having to expend leave, paid leave, first. There may be some situations where we analyze the law and find that it's our obligation. I don't know that answer tonight. The state of the law is shifting, I can tell you. The Ohio House passed legislation late last week that was supported by the president and is expected to be passed. Did I say the Ohio House? I meant the US House. It's expected to be passed in some form or another by the Senate and signed into law later this week. That will probably impose some.
Do you want to apply for that?
Okay. There's federal legislation expected to be passed this week that will change our obligations, I know, under the law. And all I'm suggesting is that this legislation will give the mayor the ability to be flexible locally, but also comply with the law that's being handed down and that we've got to interpret or be guided by. It's already in existence.
Any other questions from members of council?
I'll just add a couple of things. I participated in a conference call today hosted by the Ohio Municipal Attorneys Association and the Ohio Municipal League, where, in which we invited General Yost again to help clarify his Thursday his Thursday and Friday opinions on the effect of COVID-19 on the Open Meetings Act. And the outcome of that conference call was that he agreed to go seek an emergency order from the governor that set into motion the same permissions that this legislation would give you. But let me be clear that this legislation is not designed to be adopted under state law. This legislation is designed to be adopted under the authority of the Charter of the City of Brooklyn, which gives council the authority to establish the time, place, manner of its meetings. Council has done so in the codified ordinances, Chapter 105. And by and large, in those codified ordinances, council has said, "We need to operate according to the same provisions of the Open Meetings Act." What this ordinance before you does is temporarily suspends strict adherence to Chapter 105 of the Brooklyn Codified Ordinances under this particular crisis. It permits you to override the local code to permit you to meet in other ways, which is your authority under the Charter of the city. So on that call, I believe today, were hundreds of law directors, solicitors, seeking guidance from General Yost on this issue. And so to answer what I'm sure is a burning question, who else is doing this? I can only plausibly say lots of folks will be doing it if they're not already doing it. They're all looking for the same ability to be nimble within this crisis, both in terms of shutting down their city halls to minimize exposure, and in terms of protecting the officials in whom the voters have entrusted their care. So, you know, I think, I think this is maybe unprecedented tonight, but it's not going to be unprecedented within the next couple of days. Lots of municipalities are looking to do the same thing. By the way, last point I want to make on the Open Meetings Act and on the employee-related provisions of this, this does not impose a required course of conduct in any way. It doesn't automatically shut the public out of meetings. It doesn't require you to meet electronically or telephonically. It doesn't require the mayor to pay employees who are off of work. It gives the authority for those at the executive levels of the branches to make these decisions going forward on a case-by-case basis. You may decide, council members, for example, that you want to continue to meet in person. But you may decide that you want to restrict the public from attending in person. You may decide that you don't want to restrict the public from attending in person, in which case, you can do that. I think right now, our state order is that we can't have more than 50 in a room. Well, we could try to impose that restriction and still have folks in this room if you wanted to do that. I'm not advocating that, and the state orders may change rapidly, but I just want to let you know this legislation doesn't require you, or Council President Van Kirk, or the mayor, to do anything. It just gives them the ability to do so under the circumstances. Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions regarding this? Okay, before we vote on this, I received an email from Mr. Butler late in the day, a request that we discuss a couple of the pieces of legislation that are on the docket for Monday. And we'll have some discussion here in a moment regarding what council feels about Monday's meeting. Mary Jo passed out the agenda, or she should have this sheet here, Agenda for Monday's meeting. The three items on here, Mr. Butler, please correct me if I'm mistaken, really the only three items that are really pertinent that need to be addressed right now, or within the next week, I should say, are ordinances 11, 12, and 15. Is that correct?
And I think the mayor has requested that we act on 14 as well. Now, I want to be clear, when we call a special meeting, as tonight we did, we're confined to the topic of discussion that's noticed on that special meeting agenda. I just want, the reason we're talking about future legislation is to try to figure out whether or not the ordinance that's before you tonight might impact what we do with an agenda that's coming up, that we know is coming up on the 20th--
I wasn't--
And I recognize that--
I was just making council aware that--
Right.
You know, those ordinances, depending on what you do coming up on Monday, they will need to be voted on.
Right. That's all. And I certainly appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify for the record. So there was one additional piece of legislation that came up today in our administrative conversations, and that was, what mayor? We may need to introduce something else, too, on Monday. Tom had pointed it out. Let me look that up. I'll get there.
Okay. While you do that, we can go ahead and take a vote on 2016. All right, are there any comments or questions regarding ordinance 2020-16?
Introduce by us, suspend the rules.
Okay.
To suspend the rules. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shackey?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
To adopt. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shackey?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Thank you. Council members, the other item of business set for next Monday is, that was probably going to be on the docket next Monday for first reading, is our contract, giving us contracting authority to enter into a contract with the City of Cleveland for the disposal of solid waste and recyclables. That's up. So I didn't think that was going to be on, I don't think that was going to be requested for passage. It was just going to be introduced. So we'll have to figure out what we do with that, but--
Well, if we have a meeting, it can be introduced.
Could be at least introduced, right. Right.
I think it might be good if we would share with the residents who are participating digitally on the latest update that we have regarding the election tomorrow, because this is going to cause an awful lot of confusion with voters on whether they should be going to the polls or not.
So according to the Columbus Dispatch, the judge just denied the request to move the Ohio primary to June 2nd. I have not had a chance to read this article, but that means that the senior center polling location, Martin Luther polling location, and the Brooklyn School polling location will be open. Again, as we put in our alerts, I caution people, if they are in the classification where they're high risk, that they consider staying home. If somebody's sick, we are asking people to stay home. But we, at the senior center, will be cleaning diligently throughout the day. I know that the Board of Elections does plan on cleaning each of the sites, as well as pens and all of the equipment that's used by anybody walking through the area. I know at one point today, they were talking about having drive-by ballots. I do not know where that landed, though. So those are probably the people where I initially spoke about, who maybe fall into one of those categories or uncomfortable about coming in because, say, they're 60 or over, or have pre-existing conditions, that they could drive up and possibly request a ballot. But again, I haven't had a chance to read this article to see where that stands. I hope that is the case for those people, because we obviously want everyone to be able to vote.
Thank you. And I guess I just want to mention something that I would just encourage our residents to please adhere to the precautions that are recommended by the medical professions, professionals, especially the social distancing, which is very important to the containment during this critical period. And I know those of us who are not in the high-risk groups, you know, it is an inconvenience, but we're not doing it for ourselves. We're doing it for our relatives, our friends, our neighbors, and members of our community. And I think this is just a good lesson in, you know, putting others before ourselves in order to contain this, to protect the people who are more vulnerable. And I guess my last question is, do we have a plan for Monday on how we're going to facilitate our council meeting?
My plan was, and I was going to talk to other council members about this, my plan was that we would keep our meeting here in person and just not have the public or the other, or the directors come. I would like to stay at that 10 limit or under that the CDC has recommended. Personally, I'm just, I'm not going to be a dictator here. I mean, I'll go by what the majority of council wants to do, so we can keep this spacing. It's really weird looking over at this. We can keep the spacing if you want. But we still don't have all the bugs worked out logistically as far as doing that call-in yet. So I think as of right now, we'll just keep it as we'll be here. If something changes, obviously, one week is an eternity right now when it comes to information coming out. So we'll keep it for right now, and then I'll be in contact with all of you. Unless everyone's just like, no, we're not doing, we don't want to do that.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Just if you go forward with that, say, just like, this is a case-by-case basis, it's always changing, but for example, the next meeting would have a lot of finance stuff. I've asked Mr. Ragus to stay home this week because of coming off from being sick. I just don't want him to expose himself to anything unnecessary, and I don't know where the status would be. So if we are going to do that, and you are going to have directors stay home, if you have certain questions, again, just as the public would do, maybe email them ahead of time, so we can have all of that worked out for that. And if you want to reiterate any of the questions that you have had and asked and answered on the record, we could do it that way.
That works.
May I?
Yeah.
Be recognized? Even if we are meeting next week, I think it would be prudent for us to have in our heads, we may not be able to, and still be working just as diligently to work out those bugs, as if we were not going to meet in person.
And the administration is, they are working on it. I received an email today that they are working on it, but it's not set yet. And so obviously, this is just, this thing, I thank Mary Jo for throwing this together kind of at the last minute and to try to see how it works. And so again, it's, everything's changing constantly. But as of right now, we'll keep it that way. By this time tomorrow, it may all change, I don't know, but we'll keep it right now. Anyone object to that?
I don't object, but what exactly are we working on? Would it be--
A call-in?
Call-in?
Yeah, be a call-in.
Online with the computers?
I think it would be probably quite a bit to ask right now, under the circumstances, to get video conferencing set up so that all seven of you could see all seven of each other, and also the public could see you. So, and I hate to sound like a techniophyte, but I just think it would be difficult to do that within a week's time. The one thing I know we could do is just have a conference call. And so what the public would be able to do is listen to the deliberations and votes occurring live, probably Facebook Live or some other live mechanism. They'd just be able to listen rather than see. Obviously, that's not ideal, but it's something we know we could, we could pull off. But, you know, the Facebook Live aspect of it, I think we're going to have to make sure we nail down, so we don't, you know. After tonight, we'll see what kind of kinks we've got to work out and, you know, just try to nail it down. By the way, for the record, tonight's meeting was open to the public. There's a member of the public here. The building is open, the lights are on. So the Facebook Live aspect of this was to give the public an opportunity to see what we're trying to test out. And I appreciate those out there who are participating in that way.
And I do agree with Mrs. Groddick that I think we need to proceed as if we're going to have to depend on that.
No, absolutely. I mean, we'll be prepared for it, but at this time, we're not. And so we, hopefully, we will be by then, so we'll keep it as is, with just council and the mayor, obviously, is welcome to come as well. As long as we're under 10, I'm fine with that.
Does that mean the committee meetings are going on as scheduled also?
If they're needed. For this one, for this one--
Do this room.
Right.
Right.
And for--
Don't recommend that we go to conference room.
Right. And for this one, obviously, this next meeting with what's on the agenda, finance with-- I don't recall for that, so yes. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Thank you so much for coming in, everybody. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shackey?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a blessed evening.